I will call this session to order. We do have a quorum. I will identify closed session topics. Recommended expulsions, recommended suspended expulsions, public employee assignment, reassignment appointment, public employee discipline dismissal release complaints, conference with labor negotiator, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, conference with real property negotiators, anticipated litigation and public employee, public employee evaluation superintendent. Is there any comment on closed session topics? There is none, so we'll return to closed session. Convene our regular session. I will introduce the interpreter. Adam Avalos will serve as a Spanish interpreter for tonight's meeting. The meeting attendees who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation of the meeting, please pick up headphones from the table located at the back of the meeting room. This announcements will now, this announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Armávalo servirá como intérprete al español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación al español. El ir por audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de esta sala de reuniones.
The meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds attending the meeting. Any member of the public wanting to provide public comment on items listed on tonight's agenda, please fill out the public comment form, the green form located on the table in the back of the room. Please hand the completed form to Delia Smart Board Manager before the item comes up on the agenda. Please complete a separate form for each item, each agenda item you'd like to make a comment on. Ms. Smart is sitting in the table at the back of the room. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone on the stand located in the front of the room. Now we'll go into the prejudice allegiance. It will be led by Joy Naylor. There was no action taken in closed session. Revisions to the agenda are enclosure five, 10, 11, 17, and 18. For the upcoming agenda item 3.7, there was a change to the student performance this evening. Tonight we'll have the Redwood High Chamber Choir performing. The Redwood High Jazz Band will be performing at a board meeting later in the year. So while not, we'll move on to 3.7, student performance, Redwood High School Chamber Choir, Mr. Mark Thompson.
Mr. Bishop, if you want to start bringing in the team here. Please welcome the Redwood High School Chamber Choir to our school board meeting tonight. They will be seeing two selections from their performance last Wednesday night at the California State University Fresno Fall Choir Festival, where they received a unanimous command performance top rating from all three judges. Keep coming around, I think is what he's trying to do. We got a few of you tonight. The Chamber Choir will be one of only four high schools programs invited back to next year's command performance concert. At the 2023 festival, there was over 80 choirs that participated in this. Again, only four were requested to come back. Tonight they will perform Measure Me Sky and Through Love to Light. So please welcome Redwood High School Chamber Choir and their accompanying this Hannah Board and Choir Director Mel Correo. Thank you guys for being here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Redwood Chamber Choir. Thank you guys so much.
Let's give another round of applause. They did such a good job.
All right, we're back in our places and we'll get back to our board meeting. Our next item on the agenda is focus on student learning. Spotlight on good things happening in the district Superintendent Kirkstrom.
All right, well, great job from Redwood. And I do have to say it's so nice to start every one of our board meetings with a student presentation from arts and other areas. And again, just a reminder that we have started also the art gallery that will be revolving or evolving, revolving, I think is the right word, to show different art from schools across the district. And so after the meeting, or if you need to take a stretch break, if you go out in the back hallway, you'll see some of the great work by our students from across the district. So that is what we're about. And so it's nice to see us work to transform this space into a showcase for our students. That fits with the spotlight also this week. And we'll be giving an update at our next board meeting. Of course, we have events happening all across the district for Red Ribbon Week. You've probably seen that and heard that. And so we'll be sharing some of that in our next spotlight in November. So starting tonight for our spotlight, just a reminder, our core beliefs and commitments serve as our foundation while we're here. What we're working to achieve, our ambitious goals, to make sure this is the reality for every one of our students. We know that this is not the current reality for every one of our students. But now we have goals and we have the work to do to help us get there. And so appreciate the direction from this board on our core beliefs and commitments and what we strive to work for. So highlighting some of the great things in the district that have been going on. First of all, had the opportunity to visit Crowley Elementary with Trustee Viegas, able to see numerous classrooms with engaged learners focused on foundations. Went into, I'm going to get it wrong, it was TK, pre-K, one of the, one of the little classes. And but just the engagement, I mean, you think about, these are three, four-year-old students. All were sitting at tables, all were engaged in work, and that doesn't just happen. Kids don't come in just naturally at four and sit in a seat, right? And know what to do. That's, that's the art of an amazing teacher. And so we have teachers like that all across our district. And it was awesome to be able to go in and see that at Crowley. Also shout out to Ivan Hill Community, a great community carnival held its community carnival drew about 400 people, allowed students, families and staff and community to strengthen relationships. And we see this playing out all over the district, fall carnivals, all of those sorts of things that our schools are able to do now. And so we're very fortunate to see that and appreciate our parents and families for their support. Moving on, Annie R. Mitchell, thank you so much for our community partners. We have a strong partnership with our Visalia Police Department, Visalia Fire Department. Fire Department came out to teach students about fire safety, conducting fire drills. Thanks to Principal Taylor and the Annie R. Mitchell team for keeping our students safe in the home and knowing what to do should there be an emergency. Shout out, this is awesome. I love to see events like this. We have so many different leadership opportunities for students in Visalia. Again, it takes teachers to sponsor these sorts of events. And so we appreciate our teachers and our parents that make this happen. But we had about 100 students from our middle and high school participate in the Student Leadership Conference as Hanford West. Participants were able to learn about creative ways to connect all students to meaningful activities. And it's imperative that we continue these sorts of things as we move forward with One Visalia Connected. We know that our students' voices are so very important. I know they represented us very well. Also know FBLA, DECA, all of those sorts of things are all participating. It's fall season, right? So all those events are ongoing and look forward to highlighting all of those in future updates. La Jolla Middle School, last minimum day, the team had some intentional professional learning, engaging staff to make stronger team connections. And our board's collective commitment, of course, is to ensure that we know each student by name. And that's what they're doing at La Jolla. Had a great opportunity this week. I got to go out and have a little lunch recess. That's always important, even adults, we like to do that. And so got to visit De Visidero during lunch. What I love about this is, you know, you put a bunch of middle school kids in a cafeteria and say, sit there for 30 minutes, 45 minutes, we don't even do that very well. And so that staff has been very intentional about creating opportunities for students to move and get out energy, right? So that when they come back to class, they're ready to learn. And so they have this set up every day, their team there, the students eat, and then they have a choice of going to the library, right? Which is open, they want a quieter environment to read. They can stay in the cafeteria, talk to their friends. They can go out and the staff has organized games. There was volleyball, soccer and football on the particular day and wall ball. I'm sorry, almost got hit by a wall ball. So I have to wall ball, very still popular even after all of these years. And so, but all the kids were engaged and having fun and then some were cheering on. And also had a great opportunity out there. The following day, football players from a couple of our high schools came out and worked with De Visidero, and I believe it was Green Acres, came to play a game during, I think it was during the day or right after. And that was great too, because what's powerful about that is they get to see their high school peers and interact, right? And so it helps build a pathway. Oh, this kid's kind of cool. Maybe I want to be on that team when I get to high school, right? So it gives them some goals. So shout out to De Visidero and their team for working to engage students in meaningful, positive opportunities. Spotlight on some more of our high schools. Visalia Band Invitational, you see that on the left-hand side, over 30 bands throughout the state converged onto Visalia for the band invitational. All nine comprehensive high schools and our middle schools competed. And want to congratulate all of our students for demonstrating great talent. Also thank you again, band teachers, staff, parents that are connected with band. We know how much work goes into preparing that and making sure our kids are able to participate in these opportunities. This year's winner was Redwood Band under the direction of Jordan Ray. Redwood Rangers, tongue twister there, took second place parade, best overall percussion, first place music sweepstakes and high percussion. And the big one, the grand sweepstakes champions, best overall band. So it's great to see our band or guard kid give them the big half five. They did a great job representing us. Congratulations to Redwood there. High school volunteers, very proud of this one. When you think about all of the news stories and all of the media things out there that highlight sometimes everything that's wrong. It's nice to realize that there's a lot more good out there. Unfortunately, sometimes it gets drowned out. But our students are our future. And so I'm very proud that over 60 students from Visalia and Tulare areas participated in picking 5,000 pounds of grapes. These grapes were donated to the Food Link County and Salt and Light. And some of our students from Golden West and LD Amonte helped and participated in that. Another example of One Visalia Connected. And I believe this was on a Saturday or Sunday, it was definitely the weekend, right? So these are students that got up and went out and decided to volunteer and support others in their community. So just one example of many of the amazing things that our students do every day. Spotlight continues. Mount Whitney and Redwood High School speak the truth. This two-day event, October 13th and 14th, our Equity Services Department sponsored Healthy Lifestyle Choices Initiative. A takeover, they had assemblies, motivational speakers on connection, kindness and resiliency. Think resiliency is so important nowadays, especially for our students. They were treated to impactful stories, tools and real life examples on the value and importance of connection and overcoming challenges. Mount Whitney Health Sciences Leaders of Tomorrow held their loft event on October 10th. Six industry partners from various health-related jobs invested their time to meet our students and students were able to learn about careers. I will say we've spotlighted the loft events on a couple of different spotlights. These are occurring in all of our high schools where our academies and pathway students are going. I believe it's most of them are sophomores, a few freshmen, juniors scattered in there. But meeting with industry leaders, so people that are industry leaders in the field that they're interested in. So they're able to ask really just impactful questions like, how do I pursue this path? Like, what is the, how much money will I make? I think they're not supposed to ask that question, but you know, that's important too, right? But the important thing is the industry partners, our Visalia community, business owners and others took time out of their day to come. We had DA representatives, we had Highway Patrol, we have FBI aid. I mean, you, you name it, and they have come to work and speak to our kids. And I think that just speaks to how powerful and important education is in Visalia. Continuing, Ignite Your Curiosity at Mount Whitney High School. This place, this event took place last Monday night at the Mount Whitney Campus. Now, this is, this was for everybody in the district. This is where the College and Career Readiness Officer Office has brought 60 industry professionals to talk to Visalia Unified Fifth through 12th graders, right? So targeting early students, fifth, sixth, right? Hey, you might be interested in applying to this high school or this academy. They got to come and learn a little bit about it. I popped into a couple of sessions there and it was really informative. And again, they could hear from people who are in the field talking about the industry. And so that fifth grader may think, you know what? You know, being that FBI agent with that badge looks pretty cool. So maybe I'm going to pursue the law academy or, or maybe the health sciences. You know, hearing this person speak about how he saves lives, you know, that's kind of interesting. Maybe I want to pursue and go into the Health Sciences Academy, right? So they had the opportunity to hear about that. Continuing with the career theme, LD Amonte High School's College and Career Fair, huge success. 30 presentation topics, over 1,000 students, 50 career fair booths and first responders and over 120 presenters, providing students with ways to learn what careers in college choices are. So in Visalia, when we talk about students being college and career ready, it's not just enough to talk about it, we have to demonstrate how that can happen and then build the pathways for students to achieve that. And events like this are how that happens. So shout out to all, again, our community for just coming out and supporting all of these events at our schools. And again, thank you to our teachers, our administrators for the forethought and our College and Career Readiness Department for planning such impactful events. Getting a slide behind, there we go. Vtech Scholarship Foundation hosted their annual Harvest Festival and Pancake Breakfast. Event included a pancake breakfast, hay rides, bounce house, pumpkin patch, face painting, raffle prizes, and all proceeds supported Vtech students and scholarships. So a great turnout. Unfortunately, I was unable to be there, but we certainly appreciate the work that went into planning that event. And then spotlight on some district events. Human Resources Department and Educational Services collaborating with TOSIS to identify areas where they can support each other's work. This intentional collaboration is an example of how our systems are changing to become a unified school district to support our schools. Thank you for these teams. And then one of my highlights is anytime I get together with one of my advisories. And so on October 12th, I had the chance to have my high school student advisory representatives engaged in our first advisory. They represent their schools, respective leaders. And of course, just like my elementary and my middle school student advisories, high school students tell you like it is, right? And it's important to hear that because we need to know that as we make decisions. And so I thank our high school students for joining in that opportunity. We did talk about how can we best communicate with you? How can we get word out? Because we discovered in talking to our students, when it came to some things like, for example, our anonymous tip line, right? Where students can access through Power School and put an anonymous report in if they see or hear something. And maybe they don't want to talk to an adult, which we of course would hope they would, but if they don't feel comfortable doing that, not everybody knew about it. Not everybody knew about some of the scholarship opportunities we had out there. That means we've got to do more work on how do we communicate with kids? It may come as a surprise to everyone here, but they don't listen to every one of the announcements that we make on the intercom, nor read every one of their emails. So we're continually working on how do we make sure our students know about these important things, in addition, of course, to the communication we do with families. One of the things they mentioned was, you know, social media, beyond Facebook and Twitter, which are about the only ones I know of. And so now, we now have Instagram and we now have Visalia Unified on TikTok. So I have a feeling we're going to be able to further communicate with our students on TikTok. I don't know how to work it yet, but I am going to work on it. But we are going to start sending out messages and TikToks and those sorts of things to our students about scholarships, about great opportunities, right? And we know we're going to engage our film crews and others. We're going to have interns from our schools working with Andre, Pacina and our communications team, maybe even some TikTok takeovers by students. So really hoping to move away from the bad influences of social media and use it to promote the great things that are happening throughout our school. So excited about that. And then literacy, of course, is one of the most foundational, important things that we work on. And so you see here, some of our teachers and teams getting together to work on Fonnes and Pennell and other literacy tools that we have so that they can take that back, working on our English language development standards, our amazing TOSIS here, supporting our site leaders and continuing to provide this job embedded professional development. So appreciate Claudia and her team and all of our TOSIS for creating the conditions for this work. And of course, same thing with our secondary teams working together on that instructional foundation work. And so, Mr. President and Board, that concludes my spotlight on Visalia Unified School District.
Does any board member have any questions or comments?
I just, that was great, so much information. I do have a question about the picture of the girls picking the grapes. I didn't catch where that was. And if there are students that want to be involved in something like that, if they, who do they turn to? Where do they go?
I believe that was an event advertised at some of the schools. I'm not exactly sure the field location, Andre, I don't know if you might know that.
Yes, so we did some research on that and it's actually like a pop-up. So the individual is, I believe, a teacher in Tulare. But he actually will kind of message out the day of or the day before, like, hey, we have a farmer that has five acres of product to pick. And so there's not really a way that's organized.
So he does that through, he does.
He does it through social media. Okay, yeah, some, some way. So I'm actually working on seeing how we can connect with them better. And so, but that's, that's where it is right now.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Visalia Unified School District Quarter One Report, Superintendent Strom and members of the Executive Cabinet Team.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. President, Board members of our community. You know, I think that how as a school district, we share our progress, our areas of strength, our areas for improvement is so very important. It adds a layer of trust for our community so that they know we're being transparent about the work. We're being transparent about where we're being successful and where we need to apply additional effort. And so in addition to feedback from this board, this board asked about what is our return on some of these investments that we have invested in? So for example, the paper tutoring system. How will we know if students are accessing that? What are we doing as a district team? How can we be held accountable for this work? And so hence began the idea of a quarterly update, which will bring four times a year to this board where we'll update the board on some of the key products that we're working on as a district. So that as a board, as you make decisions around policy, as you make decisions around the superintendent evaluation, as you make decisions around budgeting, you know how we're doing in the areas that we're investing in. And so I'm really excited about this report. It also shows the depth of work that our district and school teams do every day. You know, I leave this office and there are people here. I get here in the morning early and there are already people here. We have a district office and a school office full of people who care about kids and work hours and hours every day and even at night as I get emails throughout, right? On the work that they're doing. And I'm so proud of this district team and being willing to be transparent about what we're doing, where we're being successful and where we need to increase our efforts. I think everyone should be proud as a district that we are moving down this road. And this is also important because as a board, you have said, here are our core beliefs and commitments. You are holding us as a district team accountable for building a system, building a strategic plan to get there. And so this is the first of reporting, as we build that strategic plan, these reports will conform to that so that you're continually getting updates on how we are doing, meeting our goals, our beliefs and commitments. And as I've shared before, this is important because this is our role. Our community elects a board who sets the conditions through the superintendent, through policy and through budgeting for the district to be successful. The district sets the creation, sets the conditions for schools to be successful. The district sets the creation, sets the conditions for schools to be successful. School leaders set that condition for our amazing teachers and staff. And then our amazing teachers do that to ensure that students are successful so that all of our kids come out college and career ready. So tonight, we're going to spend a little bit of time talking about some of the metrics and some of the statistics around how we're making progress toward achieving our core beliefs and commitments. And again, we're at the very beginning of this, right? We're just starting this journey. And so the purpose of the quarterly report, as we said, is to make sure we're sharing information that we're open and clear in our communication. And so tonight, you're going to hear from different members of our executive cabinet team who will be coming up and giving updates on the key work within their divisions connected to our beliefs and commitments. So that's a little bit of the run of show that we'll have. And so I look forward to this robust and informative report. And so we'll begin with our Chief Business Officer, Nathan Hernandez.
Good evening, President Guerrero, members of the board, Superintendent Schrum. So happy to lead off this, this report here, since my baseball team is done a long time ago, with the services, the business services metrics that, that we are tracking. Again, we're looking at our systems and making sure that, you know, we're monitoring this data so that we can make improvements along the way. So starting off, our, our budget and finance team held a training with our department staff, with our school site staff, kind of a 101 on, on budget and in finance, policy of procedures. We trained over a hundred staff at that meeting and we plan to engage in more of these activities throughout the year. Looking at district attendance, our district attendance percentage is up this year compared to last year. I'm still a little below where we were pre-pandemic, but over 93%, about a four and a half percent increase over last year. So we know, we hope when students are in school, they're learning, but we know when they're not in school, they're not learning. And so we're going to continue to track where we're going here. Our purchasing and print shop, you can see as was discussed, over 11,000 print jobs done in the first quarter, over 5,000 purchase orders issued. I would say hundreds of millions of dollars, but we're not quite there yet. And our tech services, well over 5,000 service tickets completed, there's still a few open, majority of those around printers. And so we're looking at that data to see what can we address a little upstream so that we can prevent some of these from becoming tickets later on down the road. And then again, for our major systems, over 99% uptime. I think one of them was, was a hundred. But again, tracking this to make sure that our systems are available for students and staff. This is just a kind of a picture of what our attendance looks like. Green is good, so green you could see across the district is, is, is up. The one anomaly was our virtual school, so they did have good attendance last year. And then again, this is our, this is our training where we introduce those concepts. And again, more of this type of training to, to come this school year. And I want to pass this on to Ed Services.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, School Board, President Guerrero, Superintendent Schrum, Board President and educational colleagues. So as Mr. Schrum talked about, this is our opportunity to give you a bit of an update as to where we are. I wanted to, so I've shared some things up here, which I hope will highlight to you that the Educational Services Department touches on each of the commitments we have set for our school district. I'm blessed to be in an area that gets to do what kids need to be successful, whatever that takes. And our department really touches on each of those areas. So let me go into just a little bit more detail on each of these. For example, we've talked a lot about our extended, expanded learning opportunities program. And in fact, you guys are going to be considering some of that tonight. But I just wanted to share with you some figures. When we compare where we were last year to this time to where we are now, it's almost doubled. And it's continuing to grow each day, which tells us that our community is really in support and needs these type of services for our students. We are looking to expand this as we go throughout the year. Another exciting piece of information is the figure you see off to the side, 806. Two weeks ago, when I was here, I told you about some exciting new things that are coming up with field trips, intersessions, winter programs and after-school programs. So we have 806 students and that number is growing daily. And actually, that number was probably as of last week. Mrs. Reed, I'm guessing it's a lot higher now. But these are families that have expressed interest in these campaigns. So we're super excited about continuing down that pathway. I look forward to kind of bringing you updates as we go on how that's working. When we're talking about our family and community resources, this is another area that Mr. Schrum highlighted before. So some of the statistics we're talking about tonight aren't where we want them to be. But because of the partnerships you guys have allowed us to work on, we're able to work through these challenges. The first one in particular talks about chronic absenteeism. We know our state defines chronic absenteeism as being absent more than 10% of the day. For children this year, if they've missed up to seven days of school, they are what we consider chronically absent. As Mr. Hernandez just suggested, we know a child, it's difficult to be successful at school when they're not here. So our team really wants to work on what that could look like. As you can see, our numbers are quite a bit higher than they were this time last year. To support that, I wanted to just highlight the positive things that will help support that. You'll notice that we've made a commitment to add some additional social workers. We know when our students are absent, many times they're not connected. Our social workers are really going to be working on that initiative with us this year. And to show what that looks like, I've listed down there for you the number of interactions we've had thus far this school year, both in group and individual settings to again, support that connection piece. Next up, we have our Student Services section. We've spoken a lot in the last few months about the need for an additional lens perhaps at our high school levels, particularly with our school counselors. I wanted to just point out the number of connections that have already occurred since school started. So definitely, we're on the pathway, still more to come. And I've got a really exciting opportunity to share with you at the next presentation, so you'll enjoy that. I also wanted to point out again, an increase in supports at our school sites. When we went from 54 counselors last year to 63, with the idea being we recognize our students need some extra guidance and support at the elementary level through high school. And, and really exciting is a group of our students, almost a hundred of them, had a chance to go to a very unique leadership conference last week and take part in those chances for students to work with their peers to help keep them engaged in school. So all of our high schools had a chance to take part in that. So we're looking forward to seeing what that's going to do for us. Next up, we have our students who receive special education supports. Again, this is another wonderful part of the Educational Services Division. We know some of our students require a little extra something to be successful at school. I just wanted to provide you with what that looks like. This time last year, we had about 2,700 students that were receiving those special education supports. This year, our number's gone up a bit. We're now at 3,500 with another almost 300 that we're working with. Again, that tells me we have kids out there who need some help and we want to be able to offer it to them. Over to the side, I wanted to just pull out a highlight of where we're seeing quite an increase. That piece on the side talks about our early learners in our preschool program. Visilia Unified has always been very proactive in offering to supports to students at our youngest levels. We know the age of preschool changed a bit because we're starting to work with students in kindergarten in our TK levels at a younger age. So this has presented us with a new and exciting challenge, but one that we're looking forward to taking on. And with that, I want to offer up my friend, Mr. Dylan.
All right, offer up, that sounds like a sacrifice almost, okay. We'll move past that. Good evening, President Gro, Board, Superintendent Schrum. I am excited to share with you a little bit about what's happening in our Human Resources Development Division. One of the things I think that even some folks in our district who've been here for a while don't necessarily realize is that our Human Resources Development Division is actually made up of three departments. So within those departments, you'll see some of the specific data spelled out in our personnel, our educator support and our benefits and risk management departments. So I'm just going to quickly, I'm not going to go into great detail because that's a lot of information there. But some of the things, just to kind of note are, if you look at the number of staff that are new hired, new employees to our district, you can see that we are growing. We are growing significantly, both in our classified numbers and our certificated numbers. One of the things you'll also see is that we still have room to grow. We have a number, especially in our classified positions, a number of vacancies that we're still working to fill. You'll also see in those sub-fill rates, there's some really exciting parts of that and there's some areas of growth that are still needed. One of the really exciting pieces is that we have a 99.38% fill rate, meaning that 99.38% of our teacher vacancies over the last three months have been filled. That is dramatically different from last year. If you recall, many of us here at the district office were out in classrooms subbing last year. And so it's, it's exciting to see that, not only having teachers in classrooms, but also having a lot of subs who want to be available when we need them. So that's an exciting part of that. The other thing I will note is that we are continuing to work on our classified vacancies. I will point out, one of the good things, and this, this data is very dynamic. So we reported this and this is the average over July, August and September, right? Quarter one. But that number now for the month of September was actually 68% fill rate. So it's growing and it's improving and that's in large thanks to Dr. Judy Burgess, Dr. Serena Arias, those teams who are working with their staff to really get creative, find new ways of doing things, fill things, reach out, partner with staff. The other area that I'll point out is in our educator support. So Robin Kurian Arhara and her team have been really diligent in helping facilitate a high-quality program for many years. I'll show a couple of pictures on the next slide where you can see some things. But I don't know if it's a record, Robin, 311, but I think it, I think it is. That's 311 teachers being supported. Every one of those teachers being supported with a mentor teacher across our district. So that is a robust support and service that our, our district is providing for those individuals. We also have 29 or 26 admin who are going through induction, getting their administrative credential. And then finally, in our benefits and risk management area, Kevin Mays and his team really working hard to make sure that, you know, the goal of this, this support is really to walk alongside and support individuals when they experience various things going on in their lives, sometimes workplace injuries. So just to give you, I told Kevin, I was like, what is that? Is that, is that good? Is that bad? Like you can look at that, go, oh my goodness. One of the things he, he shared with me is that because of our district's return to work program, the way we have that structured, we're able to actually provide modified work options. And as a result of the opportunities provided by that team, those 124 days lost are 124 days that would have otherwise been 445 days if we didn't have opportunities to create modified work opportunities for employees to still be able to work, still keep, you know, earning income, still providing families, still providing service for kids ultimately, as we work through making sure that they're taken care of, that they're healthy and that they get able to get back to work. So just kind of highlighting a little bit, oh, I don't know, there we go. The pictures on the right are sort of highlighting some of those activities that have taken place. Some of those are job fairs, the one with folks hugging, that's teacher induction. That's a fun group, man. You got to come out mentors and teachers just coming alongside one another. And then also some of our, our blitz activities. So new teachers, new classified staff going out. Superintendent Schrum has highlighted that in previous reports. The one thing on the left, and I'll leave you with this, is that one of the really concerted efforts we're making is to really take a systems thinking and, and a kind of a needs analysis approach to the work that we do, recognizing that if we're going to create the conditions for our schools to be successful and ultimately our students to be successful, we owe them our very best. And our very best is efficient, effective and equitable systems, practices and data that drives that. So that's what we're working towards as we continue to grow and improve in our Human Resources Development Division. And the little picture there of the brains is a big part of what I know I see our management team doing all the time, which is working with our leaders and with staff to coach, to think creatively and ultimately to partner together in order to provide more effective support for our staff to then obviously support student outcomes. So thank you for the time. I think I'm turning it over to Mr. Thompson.
Good evening, Board, President Guerrero, Superintendent Schrum, community. Thank you guys for coming out tonight. So my next is learning and leadership. I want to give a few metrics. Sorry, it's, it is very small, but I will explain it out on that. So just looking at curriculum instruction, what I wanted to share with you in the beginning of the year. So looking at students that are at or above a 2.3 GPA in middle school, which we had 95% and number, our percentage of students that are above a 2.0 in high school was 86%. And you might ask, why those numbers? And typically those numbers are, in the high school still, we do the ABC, D, F, following a 2.0 as a C average. In middle school, we do do a standards-based targeted levels there. And so the 2.3, the reason why both of those were chosen is because that's, that's the level that a student is eligible to participate in extracurricular activities and to be a part of that. And that means they're in good standing on their way onto graduation. So that's, that's the metrics of why we use that one. So we're seeing growth there. Obviously, we have some intervention with some students to help them get onto that road and target that in. As Mr. DeMeo shared earlier, as we have additional resources at our school sites, it's important for us to get them connected into the school system, get them connected with, with that trusting adults so we can re-engage them into their classes. Next one is iReady diagnostic. And so ELA was 20% and math was nine. Again, this is a beginning of the year test. This measures students that are on or above grade level at the beginning of the school year. This, as the year goes, as a student progresses during the school year, we should have more and more students that will be targeting that. Part of iReady, we have a commitment of doing a 45 minutes a week for math and ELA to target in on there. And it's called MyPath and it's, it's really targeted for the students. But to be very honest with you, the best thing that we're going to provide our students is quality first instruction each and every day. The best, the best intervention we can provide any student is quality instruction by, by a well-equipped teacher each and every day. And that is why you guys have seen that our instructional foundation that we've really focused on pacing guides. We're very focused on learning intentions. Basically, students knowing what they're learning that day, they have a clear understanding. The teacher has a clear understanding of that, that we are looking at our assessments, that we're getting back to the, to the good teaching, the good basics that are going on. And then we have educational tools around the teacher that are supporting that. One thing COVID did was it put us all on computers and computer teaching is different than in-person teaching. And so we really got to get back to those fundamentals of quality teaching while integrating the technology in that. So we have work to do there, definitely somewhere and keep an eye out. And you might ask the question, what about the kids that are maybe are a little further behind? You know, they're, 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 they're not just close because of MyPath is going to help those. Over the last two years, we have right now 70 TOSIs on our elementary campuses focusing on ELA and math. Ones doing level, teams in there are doing level literacy, which is targeting our students for reading. And the other group is also targeting math and really looking at number sense and targeting in on math skills. So we have that going on as well for these students that are at risk or in the lower levels. Because as we are fully aware, COVID slowed down some of our students. And so we need to pick them back up and accelerate them. So that is going on. Just to give you a reference, before COVID, we had it maybe about 18 to 20. So there's been a big ramp up of TOSIs. Not only are TOSIs doing that where they're meeting with students, but they also are coaching and they're putting in time and supporting teachers with guided reading and other areas because we know capacity in the classroom is as important as intervention outside the classroom. School leadership, this is, this is where our areas are coming in. And we've had a shift in how we are working with our principal supervisors. They're getting into schools monthly. So our goal is to get in twice a month for an hour to hour and a half coaching visit going through classrooms. This last month, they made 106 visits, which the goal was 84. So really just trying to get into those classrooms and support teachers, support the principal as we implement, which is so important in the classroom and actually seeing what's going on there so we can help the system support what's going on in the classroom. Early childhood learning. So just preschool, as you guys know, the age for TK is dropped by a couple of months and it'll continue to drop. And that's a good thing because we can serve more students. And so if you look at this, this is just a number of students enrolled in preschool, which right now we're at 916 students in preschool and we have a little over 600 in TK right now. Again, the benefit of this is we're getting students prepared for kindergarten and, and moving them on and getting them prepared and successful there. And, and so very excited about that program and our new director and the team that's working really hard to, to provide those opportunities each and every day. College and career readiness, which we want to just target in on CTE and linked learning opportunities at our school sites. So 20% of our middle schoolers are in the technology class, which is a CTE type class. And then we have 47% of our high schoolers in a CTE or linked learning opportunity. So almost half our students are in, as we always know, those are important connection points and, and opportunities for kids to get targeted in on a passion that they have, which always builds connectivity to that school. Next one is instructional technology. As you guys made an investment into Paper, which is that app program for students to have access to get tutoring 24/7 for fourth through 12th graders. Just wanted to give you a quick update to date. This was actually early last, or last week, late last week, over 3,200 encounters have happened so far. Almost 400 essays have been reviewed. Over thirty two hundred uh encounters have happened so far. Almost four hundred essays have been reviewed. And we will be launching that more and I expect that number to go a lot higher here very quickly because we'll be launching out and supporting us teachers and students in that implementation. And then going into VAPA, uh, which is visual and performing arts. Uh, looking at middle school students that are in a VAPA class is forty five percent of our students are in a currently in a VAPA class in middle school and forty two percent of our students in high school are in VAPA. Again, another way to connect, another way to be show your talents and your skills and get connected to a community that you uh want to be a part of. And then last but not least, athletics, um, parts uh participating in fall athletics. This year we have eighteen percent of middle schoolers and high schoolers, eighteen percent uh that are engaged in fall sports. So. Just wanted to give a couple uh pictures of what's got what we got going on. I'm gonna be here's here's where we're at. We're coaching, 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 and we're training, training, training. Why? Because we got back from COVID, we're back in person and we gotta get focused in. We gotta get focused in our instructional foundation and our teams are working hard to again, coach and train and to bring clarity around what our instructional foundation is, because that's what our need, our kids need to stay focused on core standards and getting them back up to pace and up to speed with where we need them to be and where they need to be so they can thrive and be successful. So that's what we have going on right now. That's been our target and that will continue to be our target as we build to support the learning and bring a continuum of learning in our district. So at this time, I'm gonna hand over to Eric Kerr, our CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Uh, good evening, uh, President Guerrero, Superintendent Schrum, members of the board. Just want to go, oh, it didn't switch. There we go. So wanted to cover some areas. I'm really excited to be able to actually put some data to some of the work. Does uh have a have a really huge team of of classified uh classified team members that do a lot of work to behind the scenes to support our students and support our schools. So just wanted to share a few uh data points that we're working on and and a- as Mr. Schrum alluded to, we will be working uh to refine these data points and and see other types of data that we can capture so that we can measure so that our team can get better. But just a few things wanted to cover. So from the facility standpoint, when I'm talking about facilities, we're talking about modernizations, construction, new construction, things like that. So we've completed four projects already this year. Um, there are six projects that are currently ongoing and ten that are in progress. So that's twenty projects. And just let that sink in for a second. So that's twenty projects, pretty big projects. Tens maybe close to a hundred million dollars in total. So quite a bit of work going on there. Nutritional services, really excited about this. Most of you know, you probably should all know that all of our kids, every single student registered to the USD receives no cost breakfast and lunch every day. And so we're happy to report that in 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 August, we had a thirty five percent increase in breakfast utilization, fifteen percent for lunches. September, it dropped off a little bit for breakfast, but lunches increased by one percent. So we we we're happy to see those increases. Um, you know, we'd we'd love it to be, you know, continuing to grow at some point if we're feeding every kid that that those numbers may plateau. But uh we're happy to see that our kids are getting uh nutritious breakfast and lunches every day. Uh, transportation. So this is an area that we are doing a lot of work on. You've heard we brought to before TransFinder, the software that will mechanize our routing and uh tracking of our students for transportation. We have twenty nine gen ed bus routes currently, uh, ten uh special ed bus routes. Those are specialized buses. And we have a ninety four percent on time rate for the morning routes and the afternoon routes clearly an opportunity, sixty percent. There's a lot of things that drive that. There tend to be uh more buses in the afternoon because we split some of the routes be because of the different dismissal times. Um, but we will be working on that and keeping a very close eye on that. Maintenance and finally, our work order system. So nine hundred and ninety three open work orders, and this is just for maintenance. Mr. Hernandez mentioned the five thousand that were completed in tech services. So this nine hundred and ninety three represent open work orders for the maintenance department. So of our forty two sites, that's about twenty two work orders per site. So um, that's not a huge number. The bulk of those are in our electrical department. So surprisingly, the HVAC, the percentage of HVAC uh work orders is decreasing because the weather is cooler. So um, that's a good thing, uh, but we do have some work to do in the electrical department. And the rest of the work orders are kind of spread out among the rest of the the rest of the trades. But our team is working on that, sorting through those. Uh, there are some duplicates. We've got some cleanup to do in that system. Um, but we're using that to kind of inform our staffing decisions and also looking at productivity as we go with that. So those are the four big areas that we're tracking right now. Again, I will likely bring back some additional metrics as we build this out uh when we go through subsequent quarters. See, whoops. So here are just some some candid shots um of my team at work. You got a mechanic on the top, some custodians, uh, the the center picture on the top, that's at the yard, it's Ops Two. That's how they they prepare. The night crew prepares every night loading up the the vans for uh their their trek out to the schools. Um, we've got some grounds folks there and and nutritional services on the bottom. So with that, I will, Superintendent Schrum, you're up. Oh, Andre.
Good evening, board president Guerrero, members of the board, Superintendent Schrum. So those are superintendent's office metrics. And so uh these metrics are really preliminary for year one because we have a brand new superintendent. Right? We're excited for him to be here. And so we really thought through what are the metrics that we need to measure as an office uh for year one. And so one of the things I do want to highlight to the board is we've been in school for fifty five days. So uh, you know, I want you to keep that number close hand because as we look through these metrics, remember those fifty five days. So our superintendent uh really heard from uh the the stakeholder feedback that they really wanted someone who was visible, someone who was approachable, someone who would go to the sites and and really engage with the community. And so that's what you see here in this in these data points. So the number of sites visited at least once up to this point, forty two. All school sites have been visited uh up to this point. And this doesn't include uh what we can't measure off of his calendar. Okay. So like if he if he gets in his car and goes and sees a school side or whatnot, uh, all of the after school engagements, that's that's not included in here. So it's a pretty phenomenal number to be able to have all the schools uh visited uh within the first really quarter of the school year. In addition to that, uh, this this is duplicate numbers uh included in the forty two is a total of sixty sites visit. They could, they might have been visited more than once. So we have the forty two schools and then of course, any schools that were visited, that forty two is embedded in the sixty number. And so it's sixty total. Again, not including all of the different engagements that the uh after school uh visits, et cetera. Okay, which you guys will will see on social media if you follow, if you follow him and you follow VUSD. And so I know that you all do. And so that 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 we see there. So it's really uh just a testament to being able to get out there. And so in communications, um, we wanted to make sure that um, you know, that we understood that communications was the third highest priority, the focus area for for uh based on the superintendent survey, right? So very fortunate that we got a superintendent that understood really the power of social media and the the need to be able to get our story back out there because a lot of great things happening in in Visalia Unified School District as you saw in person with our choir, right? But in addition to that, all of the the events and and whatnot you've seen in spotlight. And so um, we have a new communications team and and so it's really their work, uh, their thinking that has produced all of the wonderful content that you've seen uh there. You know, we have one tonight. I'm gonna embarrass him, but Adam that's sitting behind me, he's he's a one of our translators, he's also a thought partner and really engaging in what's going to go out into uh social media from a Spanish speaker's perspective. And so they they're also uh there with this developing content. And if you notice as well, all the content that we put push out or a majority of it actually is is bilingual. It's both in Spanish and English. And so that's another work that that they have done. So with that, uh, within the first fifty five days of school or so, because we started at the beginning of August, uh, we've had the number of social media posts uh for for uh for the quarter was forty five. So we're ten short, right? And so there's an area for growth, but our goal is to have one each and every day, right? And some in some platform. Another one is that our number of followers has increased. We have five hundred and forty six new followers. So I want to just invite the folks that are in the room or even people that are listening today to follow us on our social media. It's at Visalia USD. Okay, we're on Facebook, we're on Instagram, we're on Twitter. And now again, like the superintendent just mentioned, we're on TikTok. And that was based off of our um, our students saying, hey, we want to engage, but you got to engage with us where we're at, right? And so uh TikTok is where they're at. And so we want to make sure that we engage with them. Uh, the number of families uh receiving uh blackboard messages, uh, it's about eighty percent of our families. So that's an area of growth too that we're working on. So we make sure that parents know that. Uh, one thing I want to encourage families to do as well, now that are listening or or you know, get the word out is parent portal is huge for Blackboard because it allows uh families to use the app and also to be able to communicate with their teachers in Spanish or English. And so it's important that that they have that app as well. And then this is a new thing, a system that we created, which is NBC News Board Community Alerts. And so what we're doing is creating a system where um, where principals and assistant principals and district leaders are able to notify us through systematic way. And so just emailing or just kind of randomly texting somebody that they might know. Now they have a spot where they can actually uh put news in there beforehand and then we were able to share that out uh to the media. For example, one of those will be happening tomorrow and that's a baseball game where all four conference of high schools where I will be having a baseball game uh to support a student, right, a family uh who's experiencing um some hardship because they're one of their their kids is has a lot of medical issues. And so um, that is through this NBC that we're able to know that that's happening. Um, and then the last thing is our outreach, right? So the superintendent has really been um a champion for one Visalia Connected. And really, it's again, how do we connect students to um engagements outside the the classroom, right? It's not just about being in a classroom with an open book. It's how do we connect them and engage them? So we've had sixteen engagements, that's round tables and service clubs, and those service clubs can be as early as six in the morning, right? And all the way into the evening. Uh, but every single one uh the service service clubs that's asked for the superintendent to be there, he's been there. And so has asked, answered all the questions. Uh, and so it's it's been really uh great to see that and as well as our round tables. And so far, we've had our civic, our commu- uh community based organizations, our faith leaders, and then also our um our faith leaders. And then we've also had our education partners. And then the last one that we have coming up in November is our industry partners. And so they've all given feedback on on one Visalia Connected. We'll be giving the board an update on that. And then we've had also six superintendent advisories, uh, teachers classified uh both on the the clerical side as well as uh in in the ops area. Okay, uh, in operations as well as um students. So elementary, middle school, high school have all been asked uh similar questions. How can we meet their needs? How can we connect with them? How can uh we make sure that 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 they they have a really an environment to your collective commitment that's safe, supportive and innovative? And so with that, those are the uh the data points. And these again are just some of the the leadership moves, the the core beliefs and commitments that you, the board have have uh adopted, the engagements that have been there, the service clubs, and then the social media data. And with that, I'll give it over to Superintendent Schrum.
All right. Thank you, Andre and uh members of our executive cabinet team uh for this level of transparency. Of course, our first quarterly report, uh, it's a hefty report and it should be because the volume and the amount of work that you just heard these teams do behind every one of those statistics are a team of people that are working to make that happen. And so I just have to compliment and thank our staff uh for their tireless work uh to make sure that they're providing strong education, a great environment for kids to learn and teachers to teach. So next steps, we'll continue to refine the metrics. Uh, we'll receive feedback from this board, right? Establishing our baseline data. You heard a lot about our baseline data tonight. Uh, of course, we shared at the last board meeting, our academic data that was released. Uh, and that just was also released from the state yesterday. Of course, you heard about it at the last board meeting. Taking all of this and turn it into a theory of action, right? How are we going to get there? If this is what we believe, then what is our theory of action, right? What kind of system do we need to design to reach to achieve these results? We'll start the development of a strategic plan this spring. Of course, reengaging our community throughout the spring on feedback, not only for that, but also um our long range facilities plan. So members of the public, parents, students, get ready because come the spring, we're going to be calling on you to be giving us some feedback. And so we hope to see robust participation in all of those activities. Uh, and then of course, continuing to work on our foundations, communication and building our capacity and our staff to do this amazing work. And so thank you with that, board. I'll conclude our first quarterly update.
Does any board member have any questions or comments? Go ahead.
I have a a couple of comments or questions. Um, I know that I don't know if you answer them or the person who presented on that.
Just ask them to me and I'll be happy to direct them.
I was wondering about the high absenteeism rates, um, which I know Mr. De Ma- De Mayo covered. Um, are those excused or unexcused absences or both or what it what is that?
Yep. All right, Mr. De Mayo.
They're both actually for all different types of absences in the system.
Okay. And how many do they have to have for high to be considered high absenteeism?
Well, it's chronic absenteeism and and how the state defines that, it's ten percent. So at the end of the school year, when we get our dashboard, if you will, it's ten percent of the school year. So what we do is we look at ten percent of where we've been so far. So that would mean a child would have to miss, Jim, what is it, six days? Six or seven? Six. So if a child's missed six days so far this year, then they would be considered chronically absent.
And so I know that there was a a jump from, it wasn't from, was it from last year or was it from?
Yes.
Do we think that that's related to COVID still because it went like if somebody comes down with it, they have to be out for an extended period of time? Or we just don't know because presumably that would have been happening, happening.
Sure. Um, that's definitely part of it. Um, but we also know there's lots of other factors that are at play, right? The engagement piece is a big one. Um, we've also had higher incidences of students who are struggling with homelessness, foster care, that type of thing. Um, our our students are struggling a lot this year and we're definitely seeing an increase. Again, because the number almost tripled from where we were in the past. So definitely concerning and something we're really, really working hard on.
Um, and then thank, thank you, Mr. De Mayo. Um, or Mr. Thompson, or do you know how many? I know you showed pre K and the TK numbers for how many students were enrolled and I totally might be putting you on the spot. So if you don't know, you don't know. But do you know how many kindergarteners we currently have enrolled? No.
I don't have the exact number, but in kindergarten, it's about nineteen hundred.
Okay, so our our TK numbers are still pretty like low, they've grown, but they're still low compared to our kindergarten numbers. Okay, that's what I was curious about. And then my uh last question was, I know that we you said that the iReady numbers for um grade level right now, I saw in math, it said the nine percent. Is that a concerning number or is that a number that's I mean, it's obviously it's concerning because it's nine percent. But is it concerning in terms of, is that like a normal thing that we see at the beginning of the year? Or is that lower than what we've seen in the past?
Mark, help me out on this. But so that's based on students that are at grade level. So it isn't untypical that at the beginning of the year, you'd have a much smaller number because those students are not at grade level yet. So you can expound, but I think that's.
That is correct. And if we look at la- last year, it's pretty consistent. So we're at nine last year. Actually, it's ten percent with the new numbers with kindergarten coming in. The other uh piece of that, though, we've also tested a lot more students this year. Last year was a little bit lower and so we're about ten percent higher in testing students. The other piece is, and I'll be honest, iReady is new in our district still, still a couple of years. It is a little bit of a lengthy test. So especially some of our older students, we're still helping them to understand the importance of it and the urgency in that. And so that is also another challenge is some of it is not indicative of what they actually know. But again, keep in mind, as all teachers have done for many years, doing a pre-test to see where you're at is very important so that you get to where you're trying to go because this does level it out and also give them specific standards that the student is maybe behind in or needs support in and working from there. So the students, if you can hear me right now, definitely give it that effort because it will pay off for you later on as this is a pre-assessment and we'll do a middle one and then we'll do one at the end of the year.
And so then my last question is just as somebody not in education, can you sort of explain, except for, like I said, for other people out there who aren't in education, you can sort of see this difference where we're saying, hey, in our high school and middle schools, we have eighty or ninety percent of our students who have over a a two point O, but when we look at grade level, we only have nine percent. Or or why, why is that? And how does that sort of um, how do those numbers compare?
Go for it, yeah. So that's a great question because that's the disconnect, right? And so that's the area that we have to continue to work as our teachers. Obviously, we have a little bit behind. If we look at state and you can look at the articles right now in our nation right now, in our state, everyone has dipped, right? And we're seeing that dip, we've seen a small dip, not even to the percentage that the the nation has or even the state has, but we all have seen the drop. This does, the iReady does give us a beginning indicator of what kids will do on the cash or the aspect. So that is where we do know that we had twenty four percent in math last year and we had um forty two percent in ELA. This is the early warning sign that we really have so we can put in place. That's why we have committed to those seventy TOSs at the lower levels of targeting in there. As we know, if a student has the base foundation, one of the areas that we're talking, targeting as well is reading before by third grade, right? And that's a big target. That's where guided. And that's a big target. That's where guided reading comes in, explicitly teaching reading. And we're looking, working on number sense in math because those are foundational pieces as students are going to grow and be successful. So it is an intervention piece, but also it is quality instruction. Our teachers are working hard to get back into the systems, get our students all back in the system and really build that out. Hence why we went back to the instructional focus of really targeting on pacing guides, looking at grade level standards. And then uh modifying them as we support students, but really bringing that rigor back up.
Well, can I jump in there? Hope I turned it off because uh, you know, I think Ms. Case Bristow brought up a really good point. But my question from that is how if only nine percent of our kids are on grade level, then eighty percent are passing their classes?
Yeah. So one thing I would point out is there, the, the metric that I ready is using is on grade level at the end of the school year. So part of what you're seeing is it would not, it's not uncommon, you know, when you begin third grade, you don't enter third grade performing as you would at the end of third grade, right? So this is seeing where the student is in compared to, you know, those end of year on grade level statistics. But the point you're bringing up is one that this community and this, and this board is well aware of is that there is a disconnect uh between some of our grading practices, our grading policy, which is why this board has directed us to look at our grading policy. And what can we do? And that's work that we'll be doing. Um, oftentimes, uh, you know, if you're creating your own assessment, for example, I may create an assessment based on what I think, not necessarily based on what the rigor of the standard is. And so sometimes that's why you see the disconnect. Um, the importance of a grading policy is really key because are we grading things like just the academic piece of the student or sometimes what factors into grades as well are things like participation, um, behavior, um, I completed work, but that may not necessarily translate into was that work, you know, of a certain level. And so I think it's indicative of the work that we have ahead of us as a board to look at that grading policy and work with our teachers to make sure we're have a grading policy that can be implemented that's reflective of actual student performance in relation to grade level expectations.
Thank you for those answers because I think that's sort of what I was trying to, to get out was that let's say they're doing an assessment, whether it's on grade level, but we're only fifty-five days in, as somebody said. So you haven't learned maybe integers or, or, you know, I don't, can't even remember math terms, Pythagorean theorem.
That's a good one. That's, that is one. Yes.
And you're being tested on that.
Right.
But for the unit that you are on, you're doing really well. So that would be perhaps why you have a great passing rate, but not. That's what I was trying to get at.
And I ready, my learning path that he talked about, you know, what we've talked about before is nothing can replace an, an amazing effective teacher. But a good tool in the hands of an amazing effective teacher can be an extension of that teacher's ability to reach those twenty-five, thirty kids in a classroom. And so one of the things that the I Ready assessment will do is so the student begins the year on that and then it puts them on a my learning path, which is individualized and personalized. So if I'm a student who's below grade level, then when I interact with that for forty-five minutes a week, which is just a few minutes a day, it's giving me instruction where I am to build me up. So now the teacher's not having to do double, triple duty, right? Working to catch the kid up, then expose grade level materials, same thing for a student that may be above grade level. So sometimes students are interacting with that. And let's say I'm in fifth grade, but I'm working on a sixth or seventh grade level. That test takes you there and it will start asking eighth grade, ninth grade type questions until it reaches the point that you are, start to struggle with. And then that's when it puts you on the learning path. And so um we do know it's aligned tightly with our, our um end of year assessment. And so we'll see these numbers increase when we come back in December and January with the mid-year. We'll present that to you in that quarterly report. You will see those numbers increase, but we know already because of our end of the year data from twenty-one, twenty-two that we've got to get past that ceiling. Right now, our ceiling is about forty-two percent of our kids uh proficient in reading and about uh twenty-four percent or so in math. And so I think with the instructional foundation and the work of, of implementing programs like this with fidelity and then what only a teacher can do, which is the art of their teaching, we'll see improvement this year, but we have to be intentional about that, about the work that we do.
Ms. Claire.
Okay. So I just had a quick um request, but I just wanted to thank all the cabinet members for doing this. This is so helpful, this quarterly report. But for next quarterly report, um, I wanted to request that in keeping with our culture of wanting to get kids college and career ready for um the percent of students at or above grade level or at or above a two point O GPA, I wanted to add um percent of students at or above um a two point five, which is the GPA to get into a CSU and a percent of students at a three point O, which is the GPA to get into a UC. Could we do that as well?
Yeah, we can certainly add to that. And then just a reminder of the board of kind of why we chose the initial metric was again, the threshold for students to participate in all of those things that they uh enjoy at school, but we certainly have that data. Yes.
Ms. Kimonia?
Are, um, are all our teachers using I Ready at this point?
So I'll let Mark, we're working on, you know, this, this is an example of what we're working really hard as a district team to be intentional about is when we do certain pieces, how do we implement it? How do we build understanding for not only our teachers, but our students, our, our families as well, right, on what this is? And so it is our expectation, I believe it's L K through, it's not all the way through twelve. Mark helped me on the grade level, but, but for those grade levels that it does apply, that is the expectation, but we're not there yet. And so this year is about re-refocusing on that, making sure we're providing professional development. So teachers understand how to use and implement it. So that is certainly the goal. We're not at that goal yet.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
Actually, yeah. Um, I appreciate the slide on, uh, you know, trying to address chronic absenteeism. And I know we've hired more social workers. I, I think we need to do more in this regard. And so I'm wondering, in addition to social workers, um, I know previously in, in meeting with Mr. Sullivan, we have student welfare and attendance technicians. Have we seen an increase um in those folks trying to address chronic absenteeism as well? Or are we at the same levels in terms of staffing? Um, I'm just wondering, you know, uh, in terms of workload, do we have, you know, sufficient staff to continue to reach out to these students?
Great question and so timely, I must say. Um, my good friend, Mr. Dylan, sitting next to me, um, it just gave us the green light today to increase in, in the area to help Mr. Sullivan and his team support that. So we're going to be adding additional staff primarily at our elementary sites to start um to help uh, obviously tackling attendance is, is an important piece, but also working with the students on connection and family support. And the reason Jim's team is going to be so influential is because he's part of the Family Community Resource Center. So oftentimes we find that absence issues also relate to family struggles. So perhaps do we need to hook up the social workers with that? So to answer your question, absolutely, we're going to be adding staff very soon.
Thank you.
I do have a comment. Um, we switched into, we switched over into a, a quarterly planning meetings. And this is, this quarterly, quarter one report is exactly what we wanted as a board. And I, I'm not sure if the community's caught this, but you know, um, getting quarterly updates, moving in that direction, strategic planning, this is what's going to move us forward. And I really appreciate all your department and all, all the departments and all the work the staff put into this report. I think the community is seeing what's going on. There's a lot of transparency there and, and uh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to move on to our next uh our next report, and I like this one. Okay. It's Innovative Post-Secondary and Advanced Learning Opportunities Report. Presenter is Mr. Kirk Shrum and Assistant Superintendent is Andy Damaio and Mark Thompson.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. President, Board and members of our community. Also very excited about this report. Um, you know, as we advance learning opportunities for our students throughout the district. Uh, and so again, we're just getting started, right? Um, you know, this is about, I've reached my six month or so on the job and along with the amazing people, our district, you know, and our board, we now have direction, we now have clarity of what expectations are. And so now we begin going about the work. And so this is the first kind of report in which it, it is an update in a sense of that work, right? And so one of the things that we committed to and believe in as a system is that all students can achieve at high levels and demonstrate continuous growth. And the first indicator under that, to be able to do that, we have to provide high quality learning experiences that allow students to reach their full potential and equip students and staff with the tools necessary for achievement and growth. All three of the items that you're going to hear about tonight directly relate back to that core belief and those commitments. And so I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Damaio to begin our report.
Thank you, Mr. Shrum. Board, thank you again for having me up here. I'm really, really excited about this um opportunity to share with you our continuing partnership with UC Merced. You know, a few years ago, um, we recognized that so many of our students um weren't becoming eligible for programs that were available to them. Not because they didn't have the ability to do it, but perhaps they didn't have the right support at the school site to let them know what that could look like. So with our friends up at UC Merced, they created a unique opportunity to come to our school district and be that person on the campus to work with our students throughout their high school career, to really get them on track to where they needed to be. We started it last year and what it looked like was we had a um person on campus. We call them an early academic outreach program individual. And what they do is they work with our students to again, make sure they're on the right pathway towards their collegiate goals. This year, we're going to be expanding that to happen at all four of our comprehensive high schools. And in addition, we will also have the services available to all of our high school students at any of our campuses. Really, really excited about that opportunity. And essentially that's also going to give our families an opportunity to take part in this, you know? A- as the father of a, two children who went through the collegiate system, I remember how much work it was getting my own kids through. And I'm an educator, my wife's an educator. We knew what to do and how challenging that was to make sure you stick with the dates and make sure you take the right courses. Now we've got someone on site to support those students that perhaps might not have a mom and dad at home who kind of know what they need to do. Next up, I want to talk to you about what's coming next. This one is uh again, having kids that went through the system, this is so tremendous. All our students have to do is remain eligible for admission and they will be guaranteed admission into the UC program. Once we accept this partnership and hopefully you guys will be doing so later so tonight. But once that occurs, then as long as the students maintain that eligibility requirement, which again is something that the UC system um is quite hard to get into. But UC Merced in partnership with us is going to make that much more doable for our students. So I've listed some of the criteria up there for you and just know that our high school counselors are also going to be coming alongside the counselors from UC Merced to make sure our students are in support of this particular initiative. Another piece of this puzzle is making sure our students know what's available to them. So we've always done those call, of those high school trips from high school to the collegiate campuses. And many students have taken advantage of those in the past. Perhaps it's avid tours, perhaps it's leadership groups. But we've never been able to say that all of our students are going to have the opportunity to visit a four-year university. Well, that's something we're working on right now. We want to make sure our students all have the opportunity to make a visit like that. We, we can't assume that students in our community are able to do that. Many of our students have never been to a four-year campus. Imagine how exciting it's going to be for them to just walk on the grounds of the campus and realize that they could be there. We're going to make sure that happens this year. Another exciting thing that we're doing this year is you're probably aware that the state has instituted a, a new rule, if you will, that requires our seniors to make sure they're filling out the FAFSA, which is the, the program by which um the government looks to see your eligibility for financial aid programs in the collegiate system. Again, it's a great opportunity, but in the past, did our students really know that was happening? So we've got initiatives going on at all of our schools to make sure that students are excited about this. We're going to partner with them to make sure that they take part in it and also make sure they understand that this is not going to be a hindrance to them based on their nationality. Through the Dream Act, there's no risk or no worry about someone being fearful about their citizenship status and not filling it out. That's going to be a huge part of this. So we'll make sure our students are aware of that. And finally, another great piece of this whole initiative is adding on the transcript evaluation. So our students will be able to know automatically, these are the classes I've taken so far. This is what I still need to do. This is what's coming next. And have that evaluation for them all the time so that again, they're always aware of what's going on. So the counselors that you guys have added to us in partnership with the Merced program is really another layer of support that we're giving our students to really help them for the next phase of their life. And Mr. Thompson?
As Mr. Thompson comes up, I just want to uh reiterate a couple of the points that Mr. Damaio made. We're making a commitment as a system, you know, we don't want to leave it up to chance that uh parents able to take a kid to a four-year school to visit. If they are, that's wonderful. Uh, or if they're in avid class, but we're making a commitment that every junior is going to step foot on a four-year campus and we're going to work to make that happen. And for kids that have already been, hey, it's a field trip, right? Who doesn't want to go on a field trip? Um, but also I think the other piece out of this is obviously, yes, not every student is going to go to UC Merced. However, this is just one other opportunities that we're going to work to bring. And so now if you're a junior in high school and you meet this criteria, they will guarantee you admission into their university. Uh, and now we have the counselors to, to, to do that support. And so it's going to continue to open up pathways for our students to go to a four-year school, if that's what they're interested in. We are going to have a signing, uh, should this um memorandum of, of understanding be approved tonight. Uh, we'll be having a public signing. Uh, we'll do a press release with University of Merced. They'll be coming down here on Friday. Um, and we'll be, I think we're the second district in, in the area joining Dinuba uh to enter this partnership with University of Merced. We are also aware and we don't have all the details yet, but we're hoping to share more details that there could also be potentially scholarship money attached to that. So in addition to the guaranteed admission, some potential scholarship money as well. So more to come on that uh as that un-unveils. So uh, Mark?
All right. I'm going to go on to another one, which is dual enrollment pilot that we're looking into a partnership with the National Education Equity Lab. But really what it does is it provides an opportunity for our students to get dual enrollment. The first school that we're working to partner with is Arizona State University. The cloud, the course that we're looking to adopt here or to work through is a cloud computing, which is a certificated program, uh preparation course from ASU. Students that do complete this course do get a Arizona State University transcript with three units that, that is obviously transferable to other colleges and those, uh, those opportunities. It's roughly a thirteen-week program. It is taught by a professor from ASU through videos. There will be um opportunities for them to have a TA that's going to be zooming in, supporting them there. And then we also will have a by cell unified school district teacher proctoring and being in the class, supporting those students as well. Uh, the student has an option to earn their cloud computing credential from Amazon Web Services uh at the conclusion of that class, his classes in preparation for that. You might ask, well, why Mount Whitney? Uh, one, it's a unique opportunity for students at Mount Whitney, uh, but also it's because we do have our, our link learning uh computer programming uh courses there. And this is so many of them are very, would be very interested in this course. Um, and so that opportunity would be there for them, obviously, as there's more seats available. Other students from Mount Whitney would also be able to participate. The plan is to run this during a zero period, so it doesn't affect their schedule and give them that opportunity to participate. Our goal with this pilot, and we did decide to do one site, one uh, one course for this year because we want to just make sure it's the right fit for our district and then make sure it's going to be very successful to work out all the bugs and kinks. But our goal is, is to possibly potentially uh partner with other colleges through this National Equity Lab. Uh, they partner right now with Stanford, Penn, um, a variety of colleges throughout there. Um, that will give opportunities and they're looking at high leverage classes, high interest classes that students can get. Last thing I'll say with this is it's going to be great that they're going to get this learning opportunity, but it also continues to give them that opportunity to get to have access to challenging courses, to, to things and to see and to say, hey, I took a class from Arizona State University. I did well in that. You know what? I can go, I can go take other classes there. I can go do this or that. So that's also opening that door. Um, it is going to be rigorous. There is, there is expectations there, but we're excited with the support that they're going to have and for that success to happen. I'm going to hand it over to Superintendent Shrum to finish this up.
All right. Well, thank you, uh, Andy and Mark. I want to go back to that just a minute and, and also add a little narrative around to this. And this is in addition to the amazing partnership we already have with colleges, Sequoia and our other partners. In addition to the work that's already going, a couple of the benefits of this group that we're working with is they make the application a seamless process. So the students fill out a little form. They work on all the other processes, right? So that that's not a burden on our counselors or others. Um, and again, at the end of the day, our students get a trans, get transcript from the universities. And the other piece is that, that I think is really powerful is this utilizes our teachers. So our teachers are actually able to, with support from this group, they administer the class almost as a learning facilitator while a professor zooms in, right, and teaches the class and they have interaction with the teacher assistant. So I think that's very powerful as well because this leverages our current teachers' ability to deliver a dual enrollment class, which makes it much easier. ability to deliver a dual enrollment class, which makes it much easier to expand. I will also say that when you look at the offerings, depending on how this pilot goes, how this works out this spring, how we see the interactions with our systems. They do offer classes. They have one from the University of Pennsylvania. That's really interesting that I think kids would be fascinated to take. It's about grit and what it takes to be successful and taught by one of the most, you know, popular professors at the University of Pennsylvania. They also have classes that are offered through Yale and Harvard. And so just imagine that for a minute, right? Whether it's worked into a kid's schedule or it's a zero period opportunity, but students from Viso Unified actually getting college transcripts and taking a class, the same level had they been, they get the Yale transcript, they get the Stanford transcript, right? So I think this is going to open the door to continuing to build amazing opportunities. Going back, our board made it very clear in our beliefs and commitments, all students can achieve at high levels. But to do that, we have to provide the high quality learning experiences to make that happen. And this is just the beginning of our work to do that. Now, the other piece, as I conclude this report, is a partnership with University of Virginia for Leaders in Education. We know that one of the most important things we have to do is invest in our current leadership, our district team and our principals and their leadership teams. They have, they are the ones that do this work, right? If we don't invest in them, our ability to move academics, our ability to lift systems is compromised. We know that every system is designed to get the results it gets. We've talked about that. The purpose of this partnership is to heighten vision for bold possibilities of instructional leadership, aligning current resources, vision and building leadership capabilities for transformational systems. We have to do some transformation within our schools and within our districts to get different results. And so through this partnership, this is the beginning. This year we'll work with this system. They'll come in, they'll do some evaluation. We'll look at some schools that are in need of some transformation, working with their school leaders. And basically they tailor their approach to what we need. Working on our levers for change, working on instructional infrastructure, leadership, talent, management, differentiated support and accountability. We'll select a group of schools that will go through a two-year cohort where those leaders, along with the principal supervisor and others in school-based personnel, will be immersed really in a two-year learning journey on transformation change. They'll be taught by some professors in University of Virginia Darden School of Business on transformation. They, we will leverage their work to help us build our systems. And perhaps, you know, there are a lot of companies or other partners that say they do things, right? They do this and that. And they want you to buy into a product and then you're kind of stuck with it, right? I gotta, I gotta keep doing this every year. The whole purpose of this partnership is to put themselves out of business. It is to come in, build our capacity to do the work. And then they've built along with us our part, our ability to do the work. And then they fade out, right? And then we've built the capacity to lead these systems. So as we embark on this journey, I know our leaders are going to find this transformational and it's going to build their capacity to do this work. And then not every school, of course, will participate in year one, but part of the learning is coming back and expanding that through principal meetings and other opportunities. So that even if I'm not selected or I'm not in part of this program, I am learning because again, the purpose of this partnership is to build the district system. So they will come in and work with us to build our capacity. In fact, our cabinet team had an opportunity to learn with one of their professors this week, last week, for about an hour and a half on how to lead transformational change. So it was very impactful. And so I'm excited about this opportunity because we've got work to do. We need support to do the work we do, but not support in, in people coming and doing the work for us. We need support in building our capability and investing in our leadership team to do the work. And that's what this will do. So tonight you've heard about three very innovative and very unique opportunities for Viso Unified. So really excited about what this will do for our schools, our leaders, the dual enrollment for our students, the University of Merced partnership, what that will do. And so just excited about this journey we're on, connecting again back to our board's beliefs and commitments, number one and 1.1. And so with that board, I conclude this report and I turn it over to you for any questions.
Any questions or comments from the board? Dr. Vegas.
Yeah. So I just want to say I appreciate the intentionality behind selecting Mount Whitney as a site for this pilot program for the National Equity Lab. Earlier this year, I requested the numbers around dual enrollment and concurrent enrollment around all our sites to be provided to our board. And we, we saw some noticeable gaps between Redwood High School, Golden West, Eldia Monte and Mount Whitney, with Mount Whitney and Golden West having the lowest numbers. And so I appreciate the intentionality behind selecting Mount Whitney. You know, I hope that we can continue to expand this partnership with National Equity Lab. I hope the pilot goes well. So we can continue to expand this to Golden West and other high school sites. So just want to express my appreciation behind that intentionality. Thank you.
Ms. Camonia.
I'd just like to say thank you. We're, this is very innovative. That's part of our core beliefs. And I'm just really excited the direction we're taking right now.
Ms. Nader.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Dual enrollment and all, all of that is amazing. So you said that we have to sign an MOU. Is that something we're going to do tonight? Do we vote on this now or later or?
Yep. So the, the pieces attached to this, you'll see later in the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Any other board member?
That's a lot of good information. And I thank you for the capacity building in terms of the staff, but also in terms of the opportunities that were, are being presented to our students. Thank you very much. We're going to move on with our agenda. Our next item on the agenda is general public comment. General public comment on any school-related topic may be heard at this time. The board asks that any public comment on an item listed on tonight's agenda be addressed at the time the item comes up for discussion by the board. To comply with the Brown Act California's Open Meeting Law, board discussion is limited to items on the agenda. Therefore, whom receiving public comment for items not on the agenda, the board is, is limited to receiving such comments and the board may not engage in dialogue with the public. The board thanks the public for its participation in public comment and understands the board's understanding of the board responsibilities. Pursuant to board policy, the board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin by your comments by stating your name. Mireya and Brian. You're first on my list.
Hi, my name is Bryn Bartlett and this is my friend, Mimi Briones. We are sixth graders at Denton Elementary and we have a question for you. Have you ever ordered a burger without fries? Yeah, that's what I thought. Separating the two of us would be as tragic as having a burger by itself. At Denton Elementary, we have been making memories and building friendships that can't be replaced. We deserve the opportunity to continue these friendships at Ridgeview. I feel that familiar faces can only help me and my SLC friends make the transition to middle school much easier and successful. Because of these relationships, we have learned how to make them happy, communicate and share them on when they need it most. Please make space for my SLC friends at Ridgeview. La Jolla can't offer them what we can. We are more than just individual sides. We are a meal. We are better together. Don't milkshake around and make this happen to benefit future actors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. It's not easy for a young person to do that. Our next person is Jorge Briones, SLC Ridgefield. It's a topic.
Good evening, board members. My name is Jorge Briones and thank you for your attention, Superintendent Schrum and Board President Gerro. I'm here today to bring awareness and begin discussion around special education services within Viso Unified. I'm a proud parent of a sixth grader with Down Syndrome at Denton Elementary School. Denton opened its doors in 2019 as a unique campus with four specialized learning classrooms, SLC for short. The model for our C is that each special education student is on the roster of both an SLC class and a general education class. Each SLC student has opportunity to integrate into general education by attending daily morning meetings, as well as other subjects as appropriate for each student, such as music and PE or other classes as, as needed. Additionally, SLC students are invited to attend all field trips and special events with their general education class. After spending four years together for my daughter and, and her classmates, and the SLC and the Gen Ed students form strong bonds. You can go to the, onto the campus today and any day of the week and see the inclusion and acceptance of our students. The Gen Ed students see beyond the disability in their typical peers that enjoy similar things as they do, such as playing soccer and eating ice cream. Building relationships for our special students can be a challenge. Many of our kids have very little verbal language skills, making it difficult to communicate with their peers. After spending four years together, our kids are understood. Years of building strong community of peers will be lost as our special education students are not going to Ridgeview Middle School, but are being routed to La Jolla Middle School. Myself and many other parents appreciate the investment and commitment from Denton staff and students. But now we will not see the full impact of inclusion as they will be abruptly separated next year. Transition to middle school is a scary, difficult time for all students. Now our special students will have an additional barrier of not having as many friends or familiar peers with them. In past years, I appreciate that. And we appreciate that Viso Unified is bringing awareness of equity issues to the district. Equity is more than ethnicity. It's the expectation that students with special needs are included in equity plans. As district plans for the upcoming year and beyond, it is my anticipation that you will not only hear the concerns of parents and students, but also act on expanding SLC classrooms beyond two middle schools. This will allow our special education students to remain with their established community, neighbors, peers, and the friendships they, they had created over the years. This continues, continue, continue, continuity of student, of services is expected for our general education population, but not our special education students. We are requesting that the district offer a minimum one class SLC, one SLC class for the upcoming 2023, 2024 year at Ridgeview. I'm confident that both our general education and special education students will benefit from their experiences together. It makes, makes for more tolerant, inclusive and patient community. And isn't that the goal that we want for our students? Thank you.
Okay, the next person is Gerardo Orozco.
Please excuse my tired folks. I just got off work. Fifty-five days, please keep that number in mind when you hear what I'm about to tell you. Mr. DeMayo, you are correct. It is very hard for a student to learn when he is constantly absent. My son is one of those students that's constantly absent. He, he was out of school for two years because of the pandemic. He just started attending to visit their middle school in August. Okay, it is very hard for him. The reason he has been missing is because he has constantly been bullied at that school. Calling him names, loser, ammo, B H C H, worthless, long-haired freak, to throwing pencils out of him, throwing a big old glob of slime. It was very hard to remove out of his hair, pulling his hair out. Okay, I went to the school, brought it to the attention of the principal. It did not go very well. Okay, I told the principal about the incident. He did not even know about it and it happened in the morning. And he was going on and on and on about how he knows about everything that goes on at the school. I told my son, please tell him so he believes you. He took offense to that. He says, I'm not going to sit here and listen to you go on about this. Get out of my office right now. I got out of my, I got out of his office. My son led. I followed my wife behind. He started talking to my wife how he appreciated her behavior in there. She didn't even speak. Okay. And then he started going off on me and I told him to go F himself and I walked out of the office. We were outside of the office already. He swung the door open. My wife barely cleared the door. She felt the air from that door on her back. He went out there with staff members and told me that he was not going to allow me to go in there and tell himself. I said, look, I'm not going to allow my son to be bullied at your school either. He got very close to me. In fact, he got so close to me that I can feel specks of spit landing on my face as he yelled at me. This is a principle that you have at Davis at Duro Middle School. Luckily, we have avenues, us parents have avenues for schools and superintendents that refuse to act. That incident with Univision outside Davis at Duro Middle School, that was my doing. I called the news network. Sure enough, the school did not disappoint. They put on quite a show. They assaulted, they vandalized a passing vehicle. They assaulted my wife through a bottle, full bottle of water entered. Mr. Gridiron was there. He went into the whole thing unless, that's also a false narrative. Okay. I suggest that you guys get a handle on this. I'm already talking to another news network that's picking this story up. If you guys have any questions, we can, I can answer whatever question you want next meeting, but please get a hold of, get a hold of this because kids, a kid committed suicide by gunshot. About three years ago, another kid was beaten into a seizure, seizure at that same school. A homeowner from across the street had to walk over to help the student because a staff was standing there watching. Okay, I mean, the stories on and on there are endless pictures of students smoking in the bathrooms. Fights, lots of fights on TikTok, on YouTube, on Facebook, you name it. My time is up. Thank you.
Melissa Brewer.
Good evening, board. According to your board bylaws and the education code, it is wrong for district resources to be used for the promotion, endorsement or support of political campaigns. Currently, several official and perceived official social media accounts for Viso Unified School District have created a perception of endorsement for current incumbent school board candidates, Juan Guerrero, Walter Gamoyan, Randy Vegas and Catalina Blair. These social media accounts include the main Viso Unified account and are spread across multiple social media platforms. It should be noted that there are no non-incumbent profiles who are running in opposition to these incumbents who have received the same perceived support. This is, and not only unethical, but is intentionally putting your finger on the scale. It is wrong, but not surprising. It is and should be, it should be stopped immediately. But regardless, has already been reported to the proper agencies governing the improper use of taxpayer dollars for political processes since somebody is employed to run those. In addition, I would caution incumbents from using your access to students and classrooms as political props for your social media campaigns. This is walking a very fine line and as a parent, I don't appreciate it. It may also be a violation of not only board policy, but the education code. In addition to this, I am disappointed that this evening's reports for the first quarter did not include the CAST testing results for 21, 22 school year that were released yesterday on Data Quest. Although Mr. Schrum did mention them in passing. They were worse than predicted. In 2018, 19, 50% of our students met the standards in the English Literacy E L A component. In 2021 and 22 school year, these test scores reflected an 8.4% decline in proficiency, coming in at just 41.8% proficient in this component. The math component of the CAST tests came in at proficiency levels in 2018, 19 at 33%. But by 2021, we saw a steep decline of less than 25% of students testing as proficient in math in all throughout the district. It seems this is a rather important report that should have been made to the community. USD has more of a decline in test scores than Tulare County overall and California overall when it comes to math. The current board has the ultimate responsibility for these test scores. Finally, I have a few seconds left, but in January 2022, I requested a safety task force, including community members, law enforcement, parents and educators and faith leaders. That was the request you initially supported, but failed to follow through on. I want to remind you, students who do not feel safe and in reality are not safe on campus cannot learn. This board not only bears the blame for low achievement in state testing, but for every student who has been attacked, bullied and tormented by the lack of safety. By the lack of safety on campus. Thanks for silencing that alarm. You did it for other people, but not me. I appreciate that.
Just for clarification, I've allowed everybody tonight to go over by a few seconds. Ms. Reynolds.
Good evening, board and Superintendent Trump. Last week on the public comments, I did mention about wanting to see if we could get. The telephone public comments back on the agenda or for discussion. I'm just wondering if there's any updates with that. I actually went to the agenda packet and noticed that. For public comments, and I don't know if this is a typical thing, but the public comments are from like two meetings ago, not last week's meeting. So I'm just wondering if if and when can there be a discussion regarding that. I think it's highly important that we consider that we have again families that may want to be here. I know of a lot that have actually contacted me that want to be here and participate. And it would be very nice if they could use the phone. Even tonight, I was just a little bit late and it would have been nice if I could have made a phone call in because I had a lot of things going on at work tonight. Would have been nice if I could have stayed and and made a phone comment, but it is very important that I I be here if that's not available. So. Again, I want to bring that up again. And as far as the. Previous two meetings ago on the agenda, is that a normal thing or is that just misprint? I'm just curious on that. Mark Thompson did a wonderful presentation and actually I did have a question on. He you mentioned something about the students that were a little bit further behind than the others. I'm just wondering. If there's any possibility for any parents that may consider wanting their child to repeat a year, if that's an option. I've had some discussions with some people lately regarding that and I was just kind of curious. No COVID did a lot for our kids, but I'm just wondering for those that maybe feel like they need another year if that's a possibility. And then also the board meeting recaps, there's a recap newsletter you guys send out. I'm wondering if there's the ability to put the public comments like something, for example, like what I asked Mark Thompson, if if. There's a reply to that, if that can be implemented on the recap, that would be great for the community so that they can hear the response. I'm just wondering if that could be added to the recap. All right, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our consent agenda. Does any member of the public have any public comment on consent agenda items? If not, would any board member like to pull an item from consent agenda? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by.
A second.
Second by Ms. Blair, all in favor? Miss Salena.
I was waiting for you to call my name.
Student board member votes yes, motion carries seven oh.
Our next item on the agenda is student representative report Manuel Caseres Junior, Sequoia High School. And by the way, this is the last report that that our student board member will be making tonight.
Evening, board members and audience. October twenty fifth twenty two board report of each school, high school in the area. Edhs hosted community organizations during lunch on October twenty as part of National Spirit Day. Mine is War Purple to support anti bullying. Eds is hosting activities all week for Battle for the Saddle. Special events are a minor family movie night on Wednesday at six, the battle. The Battle Rally Friday at twelve with lunch carnival following the rally. Eds Water Polo will have the paddle game, JV and freshman football on Thursday. Monday will be Club Day with Halloween Trick or Treat event at lunch. This is opportunity for students to learn about and join the various clubs on campus. Golden West is celebrating the Battle for the Saddle all week with dress up days, lunchtime activities and rally this Friday. Golden West is excited for the annual teacher trick or treat on Monday, October thirty first. Golden West band competed in Sierra Cup Classic where they were. Made to finals beating out bands and larger divisions from across the state to receive tenth place. Golden West FBLA had a great time attending the LDI conference last week. On Monday, October twenty fifth, Mount Whitney hosted a rail, a night rally and trunk or treat to kick off Cowhide Week on feeder schools. Along with the communities were invited to join us for a successful community event. Mount Whitney is celebrating Cowhide Week with dress up days throughout the week. Students were given the opportunity to give suggestions and voting for dress up. We have seen an increase in participation. Link crew students decorated the Kanye Saint Bridge on Monday for Cowhide Week. Mount Whitney ASB will be hosting lunchtime activities all week in the quad. On Saturday, the Ranger Band took first in the Western Band Association Competition at Washington Union High School in Class Four A Competition. They also took home best music and best percussion. Link crew students also successful haunted house and trinket trunk or treat this past week for families. Redwood is having their annual rivals competition at Taylor's Hot Dogs on Wednesday, October twenty sixth with Mount Whitney students as well. Redwood will host their annual car Cowhide Carnival during lunch Friday with games hosted by clubs and vendors. V C I S is continuing its campaign to bring more clubs on campus. V C I S A S B. Is in the midst as of a successful suicide awareness week, October twenty fourth to twenty eight. Yellow ribbons have been provided to all students and staff to wear and students are participating in lunchtime activities. Campus has been decorated with yellow ribbons that students have written encouraging statements on. Wednesday, October twenty second sixth will be dressed up like a superhero day in recognition of suicide awareness and caring for your classmates like a superhero. Lunchtime pizza sales and game days will begin in November. Vtech held the first pancake breakfast since COVID and it was a huge success. Vtech FFA competed in the Hanford opening closing contest last week. The Novians team took third place and had two high individuals recognized for their team. The officer team also had two high individuals that were recognized with their outstanding performance. Vtech FFA had a con contest the fifteenth of October where the team took fifth. And seeds and eighth overall with Andrew Sheets taking first in plans. Congratulations to Cotton team on a job well done. ASB's leadership attended the area seed leadership training with more than twenty two hundred students in attendance. Sequoia resumed blood donations to Center California Blood Bank. Helping save over ninety four lives by our student donations. Sequoia has resumed in person campus clubs during the lunchtime. Noontime activities has come back to campus as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Manu. We really enjoy those reports. Our board listens to every single word you say because we connects us back to the schools. And I think you've done a very good job this last meetings that you represented our student body. Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna go into board member reports and we'll start with Ms. Blair.
Okay, I have a few notes. I've been a lot of places lately. So I got to go to two more loft events. One at Mount Whitney with Mr. Vegas and see the. Computer Science Academy and. I also got to go to another strong loft event today at El Diamante with the Strong Academy and those those kids are just so engaged at those. Loft events. It's incredible to me. The questions that they ask, they're all taking notes. It was really sweet. The. Teacher for the Computer Science Academy said, I didn't even tell them to bring notes, bring paper for notes, but they all brought in their paper. They're. Just rigorously like writing down. So it was great. And the questions that they ask are so meaningful and they just. It was great. So I also got to go to the the band review. The parade was incredible. All of the schools did so well. And it's just so inspiring and I got to watch, I got to watch my daughter who's in percussion and they did amazing. I wanted to wa, I wanted to stay the whole time, but. It was a long day. College and career readiness showcase I got to go to at Divisadero. And they just our college and career team does such an incredible job of getting. So many opportunities, so many things for our kids to look at and get kids excited about high school. I got to go in and listen to a little bit of the of Vtech was there and they were asking questions. They had like a spin the wheel thing for the kids to do and. I got to listen in to the Media Arts Academy for El Diamante, got to listen to. The Culinary Academy. It was beautiful. And then I got to go to three pro youth sites with Marie Pinto this week. Which I really want to encourage all the board members to do because it was so fun. I. Never knew after school could be so fun. I went to Hurley and they were doing pumpkin carving, which was amazing. And they feed those kids a snack. They're sitting at a table. That's one thing that I care so much about is just kids sitting at a table, looking at each other while they're having a snack or eating and they're talking. They're having so much fun. Then they got up and did this dance dance revolution that was so fun. And the the workers that are working with them are just loving the kids and the kids love them. They're having so much fun as well. And then I got to go over to Valley Oak and they were eating a snack that looked really good, like a sea chicken Caesar salad for a snack. I wanted to eat it. And then so what I found out, I also got to go to Golden West and what I found out was because Valley Oak is so close to Golden West, if any of those kids. Have a, if there's a program going on at Golden West that those kids want to be a part of, they let those kids, the eighth graders walk over to be a part of Golden West, which I thought was just really, I love those. Where we can cross over and get kids excited about high school. I got to go into a hip hop class at Golden West. I got to go into Dungeons and Dragons that I had never seen Dungeons and Dragons happening in real life and it was incredible. They were so engaged and. I mean, I I had no idea. And then they were, there's also like an ASB after school, they're making posters. It looks so fun. I was just so impressed with our. Our extended learning opportunities and pro youth. So that concludes my board report.
Dr. Vegas.
Thank you, President Guerrero. I was able to attend the Hispanic Heritage Month event at Mountain View Elementary and it was just a really fun time. I want to thank. Mount Whitney World Languages Club and the dance group, which did an amazing job. And I've got to say, you know, they were dancing with our dual immersion students. They did their own performance. And I didn't know prior to that, they only practiced three times before our board meeting performance. And since then, they've had so many other performances, so just. Major kudos to the staff, teachers, and of course, all the students participating. I can't wait to see programs like that continue to grow in our district. It was just a fantastic time for all of our students, families and staff. So thank you to leadership and staff who put in the time and effort to organize that, to make that happen. I was able to attend the Mount Whitney Leaders of Tomorrow event with our. Computer Science Academy and Board Member Blair. I learned a lot myself. I got to sit in on some of those table interviews I learned from. One of our industry leaders in agriculture and he was explaining how he uses IT on a daily basis. I had no idea how many gallons of milk a cow can produce today compared to. Years ago, but really all the technology, you know, and all the. You know, IT that goes into that. And so really opening doors and exposing pathways to students was really great. So. A huge shout out to our college and career readiness department for continuing to all these events for our students and exposing them to all these potential career paths. Today I sat in on my first I E P meeting for a student. So that was really interesting. I learned a lot as a student who is hard of hearing. And so really seeing this interactive process of parents, case managers, teachers. And you know, staff coming together to identify what can we do to, you know, provide the student what they need to be successful in the class is really interesting. And so. I hope to attend more of those meeting in the future and learn more about how we can continue to advocate for all our students with special needs disabilities or who just need extra supports in our classroom. Finally, on a more kind of negative Nancy note, I want to express a bit of disappointment as there was a recommendation to not place a resolution on the agenda to discuss. To discuss proposition twenty eight to do with visual and performing arts funding in schools and measure C as a board. I understand there was guidance given by legal counsel. However, in doing my due diligence, I respectfully disagree and dissent from this opinion that our board should not take a position. You know, to support these initiatives which can greatly impact our district and our community. I understand that there's concerns around ed code seven fifty four or seventy fifty four, which prohibits the use of school district resources for the purpose of urging. The supportive defeat of a ballot measure, but we are allowed to use public resources to provide information to the public about any potential effects. Even so, in my limited amount of time to research, I found several examples of school districts which have taken supports or sorry, have taken steps. To support initiatives, key words, support and not endorse. For example, in twenty twenty, several school districts adopted resolutions in support of proposition fifteen, which had the potential to bring in billions of dollars for our school districts. Just to give you a few examples, Fresno Unified, Stockton Unified, Greenfield Unified, Santa Barbara Unified, Delano Unified School District. And the Bakersfield City School District, just to name a few. And so I was going to provide printouts, but I wanted to save some trees. I encourage you to look those up on your own. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but to my knowledge, none of those school districts have been sued for adopting resolutions, supportive this initiative, right? In fact, that being said, our board is within our right to express ourselves. And provide these initial informational activities as long as we're clear that our own support of this ballot measure does not amount to an urge to. Support, you know, the public to support the measure. So I absolutely recognize our due diligence to be good financial stewards of the district and the need to avoid any litigation or potential lawsuits. But I do believe that we should not be afraid to, you know, have an opinion on initiatives that have the potential to increase. Resources for visual performing arts or impacting any other aspects of our students' education. Given that our next board meeting isn't going to take place until after the election, there's little I can do at this point, but to just express again my disappointment. But to say that I hope our board in the future is not afraid to have these discussions as we will most certainly have other initiatives in the years to come. So that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Chris Spirit Saleno.
Yes, so I attended the Fall Carnival at Mountain View. It was incredible. There were so many people there. And the kids, also a lot of them dressed in costume. It was just really wonderful. That was the day that. Think it was like the last hot day before it kind of cooled off, but nonetheless, once the sun went down, we were still out there having a good time. So. I just wanted to thank, I know as we noted earlier, that these are kind of happening all over the district, all the elementary schools. So thank you to our staff. I know that like all of the teachers at Mountain View were there doing the, running the different things as well as the PTA organizations that sort of put. All of this together. And then, of course, parents who signed up and volunteered and brought their kids and worked those carnivals and. Bought raffle tickets and all that good stuff. So thank you to our community for that. I'm looking forward to going to Cowhide this Friday night, as I'm sure many of us are. And that always is a good time. And like I said, I think it's it's been a little while since I've been able to go to Wednesday. I'm excited to do that. I have some other site visits this week that I'm looking forward to. And then I also just wanted to indicate my own support for measure C, which involves funding for COS. I'm sorry, it would it would involve a property tax increase so that we can get some four year. Colleges to come locally. We are, I know that there was a presentation, so I won't go that far into it, but Tulare County does have some of the lowest rates in the state for. Four year degrees and above. So I think it would be really, really great if we could get measure C passed. And then as well as proposition twenty eight, it doesn't increase taxes. It's not doing anything like that. It just simply provides that. One percent of the budget for education would have to be allocated to visual and performing arts. So. I encourage people to get out and vote. It is ever so important, especially when we have. Propositions and measures that can really help our schools. So with that, I conclude my report.
Good, Ms. Naylor.
I know we talked a lot about loft, but I also visited Mount Whitney's loft event for the Computer Science Department with. Superintendent Shrum and it did a great job. We've been doing leaders of of learning for quite a while since the inception of the link learning programs. And it has kind of transitioned a little bit, but I did like it. It was, it was nice to have, to see the kids being able to question those industry partners. We had IT from Tulare County. You had IT from Vaisal Unified. You also had an egg. Egg one company with their IT guy there. And so it was very insightful for the kids to see, hey, how do you use this in your, in your industry? And and what does that look like? And is this something I'm interested in? So it was just a great opportunity for our kids, again, college and career. And I just want to thank. And all of the staff for our college and career readiness staff and also the teachers at Mount Whitney. Computer Science who put in all the time to get this event going. I know it takes a lot of time and a lot of hours. So thank you so much. We also, when we were there, we were able to see the students broadcast the bulletin, which is kind of neat. They all took turns and then the principal Aguilar did a little tidbit on the history. So he every once a week. Does a little history note or fact, hey, this time in history. So I thought that was very.
So I thought that was very innovative for the kids. After that, we went to see Mineral King. And Principal DeVal and Area Administrator Serrato met us there. And we were able to visit a couple of classrooms. One was a kindergarten or TK and third grade. And the teachers were doing read alouds. And there are TOSs were in the classroom. So it was nice to see that they are working with our teachers, supporting. And they did, the teachers that we went into the classrooms were, did just a great job. One teacher was reading the book and, you know, asking those, those hard questions out. What do you think is next? What do you think happened next? And she would ask all the, get with your partner. And the kids were very attentive. And so it was, it was just great teaching to see that, so we know, so I know, man, our kids are going to read. If we have this going on in our classrooms, they are going to read. And it was very intentional on how they were, how she was going about presenting the lesson. We also saw an earthquake drill. So they, all the kids and including the staff and the teachers, we did a duck and cover. I didn't, but they did. It was fun to see. And so I just want to give a shout out to our TOSs. I know, and I appreciate the fact that we have 70 of them. They are doing such great work and hard work with our teachers, staff and our students. And I just have such a, it's just so reassuring that we have these, to me, experts really working with our, to have the best teaching strategies given to our students. And that's what it's all about. That's in my report. And I will be at the Cowhide and the Battle, both.
Ms. Gaby.
First, just, I do want to echo my personal support of Measure C and all of the hard work that goes into these fall carnivals. I was able to go, because my kids are there, at, to the Denton Fall Carnival. And it was, every teacher is working a booth and doing a much better job than us parents. And, you know, not a, really a comment. I know that, first of all, Bryn, she left, but she did an absolutely great job coming up here and speaking. And I know there's way more, you know, to the system of it. But just, you know, because it came up tonight, just a little shout out to Denton and how much they are including their SLC students. My twins are sixth graders there and they are a part of that. And it's just such a different culture. And so just teachers and administrators and staff there are just doing a great job with that. Other than that, I got to go to Willow Glen today. And, you know, Mr. Schrum talked about the importance of good first instruction and got to go into Ms. Cindy Jacobson. If you've been in the district, you know that name. And just year after year, the rigor in that classroom and the quality of like the reading level of the material she exposes them to and the level of the discussion. You know, it's just such an amazing example of like, what we expect from our students, they will rise to. And, you know, that was a great to get to be in that classroom again. And lastly, got to present, thank you to LD for all of the work that went into Career Day. I actually got to be on a panel there with Mr. DeMaio. He was obviously the better dressed and good looking one of the pair here. But I know that that's not easy to organize and especially to work with all of the outside people coming in to talk. So thank you for, you know, kind of going out of their way to do that and put that on for students. And that's it.
Ms. Gemonian.
I first like to thank the PTA and the staff that are putting on these carnivals all over the district. So just thank you for that. I went to the Mountain View Hispanic Heritage Celebration. That, what I loved, I think what I love most besides Mr. Vegas serving the, what do you call that? Horchata? Is that, yeah. So, but what I love is that when our high school kids visit an elementary school and they see, like, I seriously want one of those dresses. But when they see the activities that are going on in the high school, that gives them something to look forward to. And that, that's, that's what was amazing to me. I went to the quarterback club and visited this, this two weeks ago with our athletes of the week that are playing football. And I'm not sure where I'm going Friday night. I might hit both games. I've actually lived in Visalia for 39 years. And I maybe went to one Cowhide, so I might have to visit a Cowhide.
Okay. Yeah, as an individual board member, I would, I would like to voice my support for Measure C and Proposition 28. Getting down to where I've gone is, it wasn't just, I was fresca, said Dr. Vegas was serving. It was the piñatas that Ms. Gemonia was raffling. She was doing the, pulling out the tickets and the students were winning the piñatas. That was interesting. I attended the Visalia Band Review, Albo Creek Carnival, Golden West High School Car Show, Golden West High School Water Polo versus Porterville and the Water Polo Team Meeting Dinner. I also would like to ask as a board member request is that we get a site, school site calendar, events calendar, calendar developed. And I think we've talked about it a little bit and maybe we can get that going soon. There's a lot going on in the district and, you know, so there's seven of us. So we can kind of spread out and get to all these places. Pretty obvious that people are doing that already. But, you know, just to know what, where everything's at and what's happening. Mr. Schrum, your report, Superintendent's report.
All right, well, I have not been in Visalia that long, but I've heard something about a little game coming up on Friday. So that will be my first experience with that. So I'm looking forward to that. Of course, you heard about some of the school visits that I've been going on with members of our board so they can see what's happening in our classrooms, listen to our teachers and students. Had an opportunity to, to attend Redwood Golden West Football on Friday. And what was exciting about that is I believe it was kind of cluster themed Spirit Night for Redwood. And so they had members of Ridgeview, Green Acres and some other places helping their band and all of that, which was great to see. Cause again, and all of our high schools do similar activities, right? So the, the kids were actually playing with the high school students. And so again, you see that feeder pattern, opportunity and just students seeing the opportunities that exist. And so elementary kid realizing, oh, I want to be in the band or I want to play on the football team or I want to join this club or whatever it might be, right? They get that early exposure and it, and it sets that seed again, why we have one Visalia connected? Because we want every one of our kids to be connected to a meaningful activity. We see the impact it has. And so just wanted to highlight those things, looking forward to that continuing work. And, you know, as you, again, as you heard tonight, just the first of our quarterly report, we're excited about, you know, continuing to improve that process, bring those information pieces back to you so that we keep our board, our community updated on the work that we're doing. And then just excited about tonight, just, just the new opportunities that we're bringing for not only dual enrollment, but investing in our staff. And, you know, it, it takes a while, right, to change outcomes. You know, we're not going to get there overnight. But what is important is that we have goals, that we have a plan. That's why we have beliefs and commitments now. That's why we roll this spring into a strategic planning process. Because you aren't just going to arrive at a destination without a plan, without investment, without policy, without infrastructure work. It takes time to do those things, but that is the time and the commitment that, that we, you know, have. And that's why we're here and that's why I'm here. So I look forward to working with our amazing staff, our amazing principals, teachers and students, community parents and others so that we do advance those beliefs and commitments so that that does become the reality for every student in Visalia and not just some. But that won't happen unless we declare it first and then begin to work on it, which that has now happened. So appreciate that work, looking forward to the work ahead. And I will turn it back over to President Guerrero.
Yeah, at this time, I'd like to do staff dismissal for the staff that is working. We'll move on with our agenda. Our next item on the agenda is enclosure number 25, recommended expulsions.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second.
All in favor?
Oh, yes. Student Board Member abstains. Motion passed in 7-0.
Our next item on the agenda is enclosure number 26. Do I have a motion?
I motion.
All second.
Motion by Ms. Snaylor, second by Ms. Gaby, all in favor?
Motion, Student Board Member abstains. Motion carries six, one absent.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is enclosure number 22nd, seven. Informational item, Washington Elementary Modernization.
Good evening again, President Guerrero, Superintendent Schrum, members of the board. We, I bring to you tonight, actually enclosure 27 and 28 are two informational items on projects. And so I will, I don't know that we've actually combined them, but I will run these two together unless there's an objection. The first one is Washington Elementary School, the modernization. What I would like to point out on this is that Washington was part of Measure E. The project did not get, did not get started after the plans and the original contract is awarded in 2014. And so the plans did expire. The decision was made to bring this back and do the modernization. And so we have newer plans that were approved just earlier this month. And we did a job walk. And so the proposals will be coming in for this new project on the 18th. I would like to point out that the last bullet there is incorrect. It says Measure A, but Washington is a Measure E carryover. So this is, this is to move this project along. This is a, one of our, I guess I would call it a kind of a standard modernization. We'll do classrooms, learning spaces, new furniture. Here's some of the scope. Obviously not all inclusive, but four classrooms, new finishes, cabinets and technology in all the classrooms. So a total of, looks like 10, 11, 12 classrooms there. All classrooms will get new technology. There's site ADA upgrades and so path of travel, restrooms, the sidewalks, making sure that the correct slopes on the schedule, estimated schedule is to start around December of this year and it would go through August. And so it would hopefully be ready for August of 23. This is a, this is, this is work that will be conducted while classes in session. This is information only. There's a couple of architects drawings. Any questions on Washington? Again, it's a Measure E project, not Measure A. So there is a typo. When we bring it back, next board meeting, we'll correct that.
I have a question. Does this, or where are we with the, what we want to call multi-purpose room cafeteria?
So that's a, that's a very, yeah, that is a very good question. So that is not part of this project. So we will, as part of our long-range facilities master plan process as we go forward and we look at what the future is of not only Washington, but all of our, all of our schools. And, you know, we've got others where we need to look at what the long-range plan for all of those are. And so we will, we will look at that when we do that work. But it is not part of this project for a lot of different reasons, I think, that we've discussed over the years. But we will look at that going forward when we do our long-range planning.
Thank you.
Yeah, and you know, it's been lingering for a while, the multi-purpose building. But also when we do the long-range facility planning, I'd like to also discuss the possibility of a parking lot for Washington Elementary.
Absolutely. We would, we'll be looking at all of that for that site.
I know you said the original design was awarded to Teeter. Is that going to continue with them or is that with someone else?
Yes, Steve says yes.
Just so I make sure to abstain. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, any more questions on Washington?
Closure 28.
All right, so enclosure 28 is another information only just for the procurement of equipment. This is, this is part of the ongoing effort to replace the boilers and chillers at all of our sites. This is for the Mount Whitney multi-purpose or cafeteria building. So we awarded the contract in May. We will be replacing a, an old boiler and chiller system in that building. Yes, the approval is expected in the spring, but we are ordering the HVAC materials ahead of time because of now we're up to 10, perhaps 12 months out on HVAC equipment from when we order it. And so we're hoping for an August 23 completion. It is funded by S R 3, fully funded by S R 3 funds. And here's a, if you're familiar with Mount Whitney, there's the cafeteria. It's kind of that odd shaped building there. And these pictures are kind of telling. And so this is some shots of the actual equipment that's in there. Yes, that is a swamp cooler with cables on the roof. And so we'll be taking all of that out and replacing that with a rooftop unit, air conditioning system that, that the site deserves. And so that's, this is just information only. To order the equipment, we'll bring it back at the next board.
Any questions from the board, comments? Okay, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Our next item on the agenda is notice of intent to employ certificate of personnel and approval provisional internship permit request, Mr. Dillon.
Thank you. I'm bringing for you board, some of these opportunities that we've brought to you multiple times. This is a provisional internship permit. And our intent to employ a new teacher, asking that the board willing to go forward. This individual just needs the additional time provided, but should the board approve to become intern eligible?
Do I have a motion?
All motion.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Vegas, second by Ms. Case Versalino, all in favor?
Student Board Member, I got flustered because Jackie gave me a thumbs up. Student Board Member votes yes, one absent, motion carries six, one absent.
Our next item on the agenda is notice of intent to employ certificate of personnel and approval variable term waiver request for CCSD certification. Mr. Dillon.
Thank you again. So this is actually for a video production assignment for a teacher, one of those harder to fill situations. And so asking for the one-year term waiver for this individual, once completed, then this authorization would be added to the individual's credential.
So move.
Second.
Who's second? Okay, there's, all in favor?
Student Board Member votes yes, motion carries six, one absent.
Our next item on the agenda is the warrant list. So, Mr. Hernandez.
Good evening. Rounding out the agenda tonight is our warrant list and our routine action for all payments issued between September 26th and October 14th of 22.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
All second.
Motion by Ms. Case Versalino, second by Ms. Gaby, all in favor?
Most, Student Board Member votes yes, motion carries five, one abstention and one absent.
There are no more items on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.